All right. Why don't we go and call tonight's meeting to order? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and free speech.
Okay, roll call. All members of council are present with the exception of Counselor Miller, who is excused. Approval of tonight's agenda. No move. Hearing a motion to approve tonight's agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Let's start with the Senator. She gets, you know, Senator privilege, I guess.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Betsy Johnson. I am honored to be your state senator. I came here tonight for one purpose, and that was to publicly thank interim city manager Alex Rains for her invaluable assistance to me and my office in securing nearly fourteen million dollars for Scappus water projects. Alex could tell you that there were some challenges. I called Alex after hours. I called her on a couple of weekends in varying degrees of hysteria as we were trying to push these projects through. She was unfailingly cheerful, helpful, exceedingly competent and thorough. Her whole team was, and I especially want to point out Lori and Chris, because I know you got pulled into some of those meetings as well. It was me with Alex's phone number, but I know she called you right afterwards. The city should be extremely proud of your staff. That money would not have happened without your staff. The result of their work is obvious, a lot of new money and a clear path to completing some essential projects as Scappus continues to grow. One caution, some of this money has expenditure time limits. It's federal money that needs to be spent with prescribed deadlines as dictated by the U.S. Department of the Treasury. And if I could be permitted to allow an editorial to these comments of my personal appreciation, it's that the city should start soon with Alex as your full-time city manager. In my opinion, it would be catastrophic if you had to break in a new manager who didn't know the projects or understand the Oregon political process. The city doesn't have the luxury of time. You are so lucky to have the staff, Alex, Lori, Chris, the whole staff in this city, ready to go and ready to go now. I thank you for allowing me to make these comments, and with your permission, I'd like to give a little gift to Alex of personal.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Next. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just state your name and the city you live in for the record. We used to do addresses, but we're live, so we don't need people knowing that you're not home. Have your address.
Okay, first of all, good evening, everybody. My name is Peggy Shoemaker LeBlanc, and I'm speaking-
You move closer to the microphone.
Did you get my name?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm speaking to the last letter that I submitted on July 15th of this year to the City Council Ad Hoc Committee members, the mayor and the city manager, which stated my concerns of the excavation in close proximity to the cedar trees bordering the property that would, according to my arborists, damage the trees to the point of destruction. In listening to the last ad hoc meeting on July 15th and hearing the formula put forth by Nicole of the watershed council that they use to determine the critical root zone of a tree, my husband and I applied this equation to one of our largest trees measuring slightly over fifteen feet in circumference at four and a half feet up from the base, which established its diameter at five feet. Applying the math at one and a half feet per inch, this would put the exterior root zone at ninety feet into the Grabhorn property. Nicole stated that the safety zone between the interior and exterior critical root zone is fifty percent, which would put it at forty-five feet from the base of the tree. She also stated this fifty percent is minimal distance for critical root zone preservation. My certified arborist, Joe Harity of Harity Tree Specialist, did say to me when he was at our house on July 9th that fifty feet from the tree base should be sufficient to mitigate the safety of the root structure. I was in contact with him today, July 19th, and they hope to have a letter to me next week with his recommendation for the cedar trees preservation. I would state that given this formula, the road would not be a viable option for this property, at least not in the current plan presented for its development. I continue to hear references to utilities going into the ground regardless of the road. As utilities cannot be put next to root structures, optional placement for these utilities needs to be considered. It is public knowledge that the utilities were included in the upgrade to the JP West Bridge and surmise this sets a precedence and should be a viable option to the EJ Smith Bridge, which needs upgrading for the same reason the JP West Bridge did. Secondly, and no less important, is the preservation of our well, which does provide for the water needs inside our home. It is thirty-two feet from the Grabhorn property line. This is enough for possible contamination of our water source. As stated in my first letter to the city on June 18th, I require documented assurances from a comprehensive hydrologist assessment of the USGS hydrologist to confirm any development close to my property will not contaminate our water source. Thirdly, I would like to address the liquefaction factor of the property, which is high in the event of severe earthquake. According to the Oregon HazView Geo-Hazard Viewer and the Oregon Hazard Explorer provided by Oregon State OHelp, from my understanding, the nature of liquefaction soils, they are of soft, silty, and calage consistency, which do not have good drainage and load with water. If groundwater is high enough and soils are of such consistency, then the ground loses its stability to hold the structures on it. As the Oregon HazView and Oregon Hazard Explorer both indicate this property liquefaction factor is high, they have determined the ground is of this nature. An independent civil engineering comprehensive hydrology assessment would certainly be paramount importance, given the main reason stated for this road is emergency egress due to natural disaster. The four that were presented were flooding, earthquake, ice storms, and wildland fires. Unless the city's more important reason is perhaps to plan to push this road all the way through to Watts, which would then present another issue of it becoming a Highway 30 bypass. In any case, due diligence for the natural limitations of the property need to be exhaustively investigated before a comprehensive diagram with thoughtful layout for a truly public park be presented. I thank you for allowing me time to make my comments and look forward to the responses and actions in regards to my observations and requests.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have our copies as well, if you would like.
Perfume, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Burge, City Council, city staff. My name is Marissa Jacobs, and I'm speaking-
It's nice to actually see you in person on screen.
In living person. It is. It's nice to be in chambers. So tonight, I'm speaking to you as a citizen and resident of Scappus. I have been watching the public videos of the Grabhorn Ad Hoc Committee sessions whose work and intentions have been much appreciated and needed. This past Thursday's ad hoc meeting was insightful. The meeting number barely reached quorum. As the chair presented the presentation you're going to see this evening, it quickly became clear this was the first time the committee members saw the presentation. As the dialogue and questions continued, it was evident there was zero committee collaboration on the presentation. The chair commented it might be too late to make changes to the presentation even after varying viewpoints on the validity of the content presented. As a result of last week's meeting, it's become clear that the timeline council has set out for this group to complete the body of work is too tight. Simply, the committee needs more time to finalize their research and move to the design phase. The city has five years to apply for a grant to develop the property. Given this property represents an amazing opportunity for the city, its critical council enabled this committee the additional time to bring you a fully vetted plan inclusive of why elements were included and excluded. Another observation of the committee's work was the release of a survey. In tonight's presentation from the committee, they are highlighting responses from a survey. I'm formally challenging this survey as it did not meet established survey administration and developmental guidelines standards. With all due respect, Madam Chair. The survey was not clear on purpose. The survey did not include how the results would be utilized prior to taking the survey. No published timeframe, the survey would be open. The survey was not made available in multiple modes for participants to take the survey. The technology used to administer the survey had no controls in place to manage multiple entries or identifiers to confirm single admission. For these reasons, council cannot accept the data and results should not be presented as a fair and equitable representation of what the citizens are seeking. Should the committee find a survey necessary to refine their understanding of community needs, council should extend the committee's timeline to include a survey. I continue to praise the good work the committee is mining for our city to utilize holistically. First, our town lacks an emergency response plan, a plan that's required for all cities. Council should prioritize the creation of this plan, which would be beneficial to answer the question, what is the need for expanding a road through a park? Second, the committee has thoroughly investigated alternative locations for dog parks without success. The dog park's a top amenity of the park. As there's no inventory available for a park to be located, it should stay at the same size and location in its currently situated. When applying the critical root zone calculation to determine feasibility of developing near the trees on the Shoemaker-LeBlanc property, the results indicate that excavation would need to be at a minimum fifty feet from the trees, which puts any potential road or access point in the middle of the Grabhorn floodplain rendering the space useless. Based upon these three key discoveries, the options are becoming clear. The property can be developed for a road or a park, not both. In closing, I'm asking council for the following. Move grant application to the following year. Extend the timeline for the ad hoc committee to thoroughly represent the needs of the citizens of Scappus. Develop and present the town emergency response plan. And finally, disregard survey responses that are invalid and commission a third party to create and manage a valid survey that would assure accuracy and represent the true needs of the citizens of Scappus at the park and rec's request. Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lichten.
I was gonna wait since my topic is on the agenda, but since it's all related to this anyway.
Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, let's just do it that way.
Wait?
No, go.
Oh, okay. I'm representing, Jim Lichten, also from Scappus. I'm representing the dog park on the ad hoc committee's deliberations. I wrote out my comments in order to be clear and relatively concise, so you'll have to forgive me reading. As things stand at the moment, the dog park is in just as much danger of disappearing as it was when the initial plans for the Grabhorn addition were presented to you council members. Current proposal includes a fish-friendly culvert, tons of fill that haven't even been discussed with the appropriate state agencies as far as I can tell, and certainly have not been approved. And the proposed placement of the park's equipment shed would cut down the size of our existing large enclosure by approximately forty-two percent, almost half the size it has now, when we actually need twice the size we now have. And the smaller enclosure for small and less socialized dogs, which also sees daily use, remains unaddressed. Needless to say, though I will, that's not encouraging. The Cathead property near the airport has been considered as a possible slight site for a new dog park. I've been there twice to survey the area, the second time to confirm the actual boundaries of that site with someone familiar with it and to reexamine my first opinion. I recall the city's promise not to endanger the wetlands habitat when they annexed the property in that area. That alone would make putting a dog park on the Cathead site impossible. But the cost of providing access, parking, landscaping, water, shelter, whatever, simple amenities on that site make it absolutely ridiculous to consider. And it would undoubtedly be unusable for a substantial part of the year. It's not near wetland habitat, it is wetland habitat. The Cathead idea is neither reasonable nor feasible. It could become a great area for a non-invasive nature trail, but not for a dog park. City government commonly makes very public statements of regard for the livability in our town. Regarding Grabhorn again, the plan for a road through the park seems to be both short-sighted, unnecessary, and very detrimental to the notion of livability. New businesses and organizations moving into Scappus need a park that is a park for people that will come here with them to work and live. They don't need another thoroughfare. It certainly won't help the dog park, which it would cut right through the middle of, and it is not favored by a large portion of people who responded to plans for it. It is also the most inconvenient and unwanted route for additional city utilities. When the new bridge on JP West was built, it included the addition of city utilities right along with the bridge. If the Smith Road Bridge were replaced to current standards, it would not only provide the same ability to root and upgrade city utilities on that side of town, it would also solve the immediate issue of emergency access to that portion of town. The fire department, for example, could just come out of the barn and make a right turn. And I quite frankly imagine it would cost a lot less than the unfavorable road that would take up a large portion of park property. Divide it into sections, destroy a needed stand of heritage cedars, and create even more of a traffic hazard than already exists in the park. I've seen no real consideration for that or other options, and I quite frankly fail to see why that's the case. If this unclear, real need for that unwanted road is future development, allow me to suggest that the city remind developers that taxpayers don't pay for necessities for their projects or their profit. They do. Beyond that, there are simply other choices the city council needs to consider much more seriously, and thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, good evening all. My name is John Riuta. I live in Scappus. I'm going to bring you something just a tad different. I've been told in the past that there have occasionally been fireworks at these meetings, and I'm not going to bring them, but I am going to talk about them. To start off with, I'd like to make a little bit of an observation. My wife and I were married in 1993 on July 2nd. Many years, we took vacations around this particular time, taking advantage of the Fourth of July holiday. It's a nice time to go on a vacation. Oregon's beautiful and high summer. For the past decade or so, we have not left our home over the Fourth of July holiday. It's a practice that many of my neighbors have also taken up. The reason that we don't is because we live in reasonable proximity to a number of amateur explosives enthusiasts. And these folks, very celebratory every Fourth of July, go to great lengths, possibly to other states from what it appears, in order to obtain the source of their amusement. And so for most of the Fourth of July, we are treated to explosions that go on well into the night, sometimes into the following morning. The next morning, we awake to find bits of exploded fireworks in our front lawns, on our vehicles, on our back porches, on our roofs, in our gardens. Now, when I'm talking about fireworks, I'm not talking about just the annoying little ones. Maybe they're a bit loud and maybe they're a bit bigger than somebody would want, but they're not maybe excessively beyond the Oregon limitation of a firework that doesn't rise more than twelve inches in the air or expand in a circumference more than six feet. No, I'm talking about large professional aerial shells that rise higher than rooftops, that rise higher than treetops, that explode with vast spreads of twenty-five yards and more. My neighbors and I have found debris as far as seventy-five yards away from where we know they were launched. Now, for years, we've put up with this. It's the Fourth of July after all. We don't want to be killjoys. We don't want to get in anyone's fun. And we've put up with our daughter being terrified as she grew up, and we've put up with our dog being traumatized and having to be sedated and having to sit with her in the central bathroom of our home because it's the only room that doesn't have an external wall and doesn't therefore get the full force of the concussion of each explosion. But this past Fourth of July, as I sat out on my back porch watching the explosions from the street adjacent to us and listening as the bits of flaming debris rained down on the trees behind our house and wondering which one of them was actually going to catch, I finally decided I've had enough. I've come to you tonight to bring to you the fact that we have a problem in Scappus. If you go up on the hill on the Fourth of July night, and sometimes if the weather is fair on New Year's Eve, you will see something that looks akin to a small professional pyrotechnics display. Now, these fireworks are not available in Oregon. They are being brought in either from native land or possibly from adjacent states. Now, I've spoken with the local officers. They've been very professional. You should know. They've all been very friendly. And they've said that the problem they have is that it's difficult to catch the culprits in the act. They have to catch them actually igniting these fireworks. Even if they did catch them, the penalty is not particularly onerous. However, in conversations, we've realized that there are other things that can be levied. For instance, creating a nuisance, disturbing the peace. I also brought up the fact that I formerly worked in the firearms industry, so I'm very familiar with the ATF. And bringing these across state lines into a state where they are in fact illegal is a federal offense. It's an offense in the U.S. Code punishable by up to a year in prison. I don't think that people fully understand the full ramifications of this. And I'm not bringing this to you because it's simply annoying or because it's personally troubled my family. I would venture to say that probably more than one person in this room lives with a dog. Now, I can't speak for cats because I've never lived with one, but I do know that fireworks absolutely terrify dogs. And the reason is, is because their hearing is so much better than ours. They're not just the sound terrified, it's the actual physical concussion through the air that they can feel. Our dog could hear fireworks going off long before we noticed them. The other group that's in the community that I think we all wish to honor as often as we possibly can are our veterans. We have many veterans in the community. Many are combat veterans. Some are unfortunate enough to have been burdened with PTSD. Now, I know from many of my friends who are veterans have said that this is a very real problem, that veterans all across the country are annually traumatized by being subjected to these amateur high explosive displays. They can avoid public displays of fireworks, such as a set off in St. Helens, but they can't avoid having their neighbors suddenly set off roman candles above their own homes. This is something that we need to respect. It's a matter of keeping the community, as one of the previous speakers said, a livable place. And so I come to you tonight. I don't have an actual solution. That's what you're here for. I would advise that perhaps at least an information campaign to let people know what the possible penalties of this is, what the possible dangers of this is, because we are in a drought situation again this year. Any small spark could very easily trip a large conflagration that could destroy a sizable portion of this town, including putting people, hard-working people, families, out of their homes for extended period of time. So I ask that you please consider this matter seriously and consider it in the course of trying to find a solution to it. It's gone on long enough. It does need to stop, and I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? All right, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda, which is the May 17th, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes, June 7th City Council Meeting Minutes, June 21st City Council Meeting Minutes, and the appointment of Robert Backus as an alternate member on the Economic Development Committee. No move. Hearing a motion from Counselor Polling. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Counselor McQ. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, Grabhorn Park Ad Hoc Committee Progress Report Number Two. Chair Heinz, welcome.
Thank you so much for having me tonight to present on our findings so far. So definitely learned a lot since our last progress report, as was highlighted by Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Shoemaker. And I do just want to make just a couple of comments based off of what they had brought to the table. So we were, so everything that was discussed on Thursday night, some of the changes that were wanted to, that the committee members wanted to make, we were able to make all the changes necessary. Thank you, Susan, for making that happen. So there was, there was a quick turnaround going from the public forum to getting everything ready for this report because the public forum did happen on July 10th. So we were able to make many changes, including bringing in information regarding the incense cedars and what Nicole had brought regarding the critical root zone. I also wanted to comment on the survey. So we had the public forum on July 10th. One of the committee members had suggested that we have a survey for people who attended the forum so that we can get a good idea of what kind of, how they favored it after they were presented with new information. We were able to add new questions. We were able to streamline some of our questions. And then several of the committee members wanted specific questions added to the survey that were not present in the fall survey. Since, for example, would, would citizens like to have turf and lights? What kind of signage would we like to see? Jim Lichten wanted to know, would people support a dog park on the outskirts of town? So they were just kind of more specific to the things that we have been looking at. It was also suggested that we do allow the survey to circulate on social media for a couple of days just to gain more feedback. And I would say that the data that we collected was pretty consistent with the, for the original questions with what we had received in the fall. What was new were things like signage, which I'll go over, would, would people like kind of more nature spaces? And so for us, to me, this survey is really just an opportunity for us to have some more discussion points. And that's, that's how I would like it to be presented, is it's just some discussion points for us as a committee and to see as we presented more things, as time has gone on, how do people still feel about these things? And so that, that was the, the point of the survey. So as I said, we had the public forum on July 10th. Approximately thirty to forty people were in attendance. And thank you for, there were a couple of counselors who showed up. I really appreciate that. Thirty-six who were attending took a post-attendance survey. The survey was then opened up to the general public after the forum, and then we had a hundred and fifty-seven total respondents for the survey. So I can, I can go through some of these highlights. Do you guys have access to these? Okay. Would you like to spend the time going through some of these top, some of these top points? Or do you guys have discussion points that you like to go through?
Go ahead.
Okay. So fifty-five percent of the citizens who voted would like the dog park to stay at Veterans. Thirty percent would support a dog park at the edge of town. Twenty-nine supported a through road at Grabhorn, and forty-two did support emergency access. Forty percent supported a six-lane pool. Eighteen point seven percent would like to work with other agencies to help support the pool. And then fifty-nine point five would like to support a splash pad at Grabhorn. That was another thing that we had discussed was if a pool wasn't possible, would, would citizens like the idea of a splash pad? And so that was another thing that we were able to bring up and discuss in the survey.
Splash pad would mean kind of the umbrella of anything, sort of water-
Splash pad would mean kind of the umbrella of anything sort of water related, not necessarily a pad, but some sort of a water experience that's
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Fifty-two supported a softball field at Grabhorn, 58 supported a soccer field, 56 supported fields with turf and lighting, 47% feel that they would use walking trails as a regular means of connection, and then 42.9 feel that trail connections would be helpful, but they wouldn't necessarily use them to get from one road to another. Top amenities that were, that were suggested that we have, that we have been discussing but haven't been our top priorities were a playground, basketball courts, tennis courts, and pickleball. Survey responses for use of open space and trail, we wanted a little bit more, there's been a lot of discussion on how we can really use the environment to our advantage, especially with a wetlands area. So we wanted to create a little bit more discussion around that. 65% would enjoy seeing some portions left open for wetlands or open space. The top amenities among the trail that people would like to see are benches and viewpoints, about 28%, some mini or natural play areas, 21%, and picnic tables. Forty percent also said they would use some exercise equipment if we were placing along the trail. Signage, 57% would like signage discussing the role of the Scapoose Creek within the watershed. 54 would like to know more about the wildlife they see at the park, 50% would like to have signs that discuss the importance of wetlands, and 49% would like to have signs that show how to identify local plants in the area. Okay, so that was, those were the bulk of like the, the main survey responses. I have here, it says highlights of forum from attendees. What we had were four pads where people could write comments. So I had access to all the comments and tried to get as many as possible in here without being too repetitive. So there would be just a big variety here of comments. Now, some of these comments were mentioned by one person, some of these were multiple people who had said these comments, so none of these comments are weighted in importance. But I just wanted everybody to have a space for, they came, they commented, these are being presented. There was a strong need shared by softball team for a softball field that can be managed by the city to avoid access issues. They would like fields to have turf and lights for longer playtimes and seasons. Citizens are concerned about the noise and traffic from potential fields. They would like to have the bridge on E.J. Smith fixed and brought into code prior to any road consideration, and they are concerned regarding the safety issues of a road. Two citizens did express concern that not having a road and having fields would create logistical issues for caregivers if they're like having to drive from a baseball field to a softball field. Citizens are concerned that the road will damage incense cedars. It has been noted by the Scapoose Bay Watershed Council that cedars do provide a windbreak, which would be helpful for parkgoers in addition to just the natural environment that it supports. Citizens would like us to work with Harper's Playground for an ADA and inclusive play area. Citizens are concerned with taxes, costs, and fund maintenance for development of this area. Citizens would like foot bridges for access, citizens would like, if there is a road, for it to be multi-modal instead of a through road, and then citizens would like a larger dog park. So that was the bulk of the forum information. Overall, I was very pleased with the turnout, very pleased with the feedback. Did you guys have questions on? I didn't go much into how we presented, so we ultimately had 10 poster boards with information. We had Parks and Rec and G-PAC Committee kind of posted at each, at each poster board, just providing information and writing comments or allowing patrons to write comments as we went. And then, of course, we had the survey that was offered, and then we were just there to answer as many questions as possible. Moving on to dog park updates, we did learn that a fresh family culvert is a potential mitigation option, but ODFW did say that they would just seek the most minimal impact possible. So that, when discussing the original dog park plan, there was a concern that the fresh family culvert would not be a viable option because ODFW wouldn't necessarily approve it. So we did learn that they, it is a potential option, but they would still have to see if it was as, as minimal impact as possible. There have been concerns from city staffs, city staff spoken that there was a large geese and duck population that lives on the Cat Head parcel. So that needs to be taken in consideration. As Jim, and this, this was also written before Jim was able to review the Cat Head parcel. So now that we have, that he has had the opportunity to, to view it and have learned that it is mostly wetlands, that, that is a, that is also a concern, that it's wetlands, that there's a large geese and duck population. We've also discussed planning for smaller dog parks, but that would not really meet the needs of the dog park because ultimately the dogs go there so they could have ample space to run. And so multiple smaller dog parks would be no better than most people's backyards. Comments suggest that the dog park is a top amenity of the park, but there is still no feasible alternative that has been identified, as Jim spoke to. So our suggestions and action items. Again, the first action item was to be able to tour Cat Head, so we have done that. And then the next two options were, happened tonight, which was fantastic. We would like to see kind of more conversations on a joint collaboration for the pool and splash pad. The hope is that while I think we'll, people will settle for a six lane outdoor pool, it seems like people really want a year round indoor pool. And so if we are going to go the pool route, we would love to see a larger collaboration for people who, who would really have a need for the, for the space, and also finding a space that would be more suitable for a pool. G-PAC would also like to see a cross the building of the school district and the city with fields, which is the, the beginning of that happened tonight, so that was, that was also fantastic. Our next items are to be reviewing options for dual purpose fields. And then the very last thing, this is something that was discussed by Ms. Shoemaker and then Ms. Jacobs as well, and that was the protection of the Westerly Tree Line. So we learned in Thursday night's meeting about the critical root zone, zone concerns. So if we are looking at, so there was a diagram that was discussed at the meeting where if we measure the trees, the 27 incense cedar, cedar trees that are at the Westerly Tree Line, if we measure four and a half feet off the ground, the diameter, then there is a, an equation that shows like how far out you need to buffer in order to protect the critical tree ro, tree roots. Now, this puts any potential road about 40 to 60 feet into the middle of the park. So with that knowledge, it creates a challenge for us because we have potentially a road right through the middle of our park and then also no alternative for a dog park. So those are our biggest challenges that we see right now. That is the, that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions by council?
Yeah, I have a question. Kara, you, the tennis courts and pickleball courts and basketball court, and pickleball came, it was at the bottom. I'm just a little bit concerned that, that percentages work against something like pickleball, which most people don't know very little about.
Right.
And that we can't, as you make decisions, what you recommend to go into the park, you know, I think you have, I'm hoping that you take a look at more than just what percentage, you know, the bug, pickleball's last, we're just gonna cross that off, you know? So I'm just saying, you probably have a mind that there's more to it than that, because you are the more visionary part of our community.
Right.
And so.
So one of the things that we've looked at is, okay, what is great for this space? And what other spaces do we have? And so it has been commented several times that, so we have tennis courts, and in the original master plan, there was a plan for additional tennis courts in that space. And pickleball and tennis courts can be a dual purpose field. So would it be more ideal to put tennis courts and pickleball in, in Grabhorn? Or would it be more ideal to kind of nestle those courts together and create a dual purpose court in that space? So I, I definitely don't think that we, we are attempting to look at this as broadly as possible and looking at what citizens say, but also what is, what is the best use of this space? It can be, I mean, it's definitely not easy, but I think that it's really given me a really good perspective as the chair of what future projects need to, need to happen.
Kara, again, thank you so much for what you're doing. This is, and I know how hard you work, the entire committee, and so we dearly appreciate it. I get the sense from, from some of the comments that there would be a value in having additional time to work on these various elements, especially as new issues come, come to, come to light and, and more, more complexity and so forth. So do you, do you have a sense of that? Would there be, would you like to see more time for the committee to work?
So on that, I wouldn't be able to speak for the entire committee, because that is, that specific point we haven't discussed. There are, so I, I think tonight was a really good example. When we're, when we're looking at, two of the main things that we really haven't been able to fully discuss are the soccer field and the softball field. Everyone is very comfortable with the trail and putting amenities and signage and, and having a good space for, for night, viewing the environment. With the soccer field and the softball field, we, we come up against a challenge of, well, do we have, do we need to access the space because there's minimal acreage for, for future fields? Or would it be better to attempt to work with the school district and, and create a sports complex where we can have all the softball fields together and, or attempt to gain, raise money for turf, so there is longer play seasons? So I would say that is the biggest challenge where, where having more time would be helpful. But I still think that we would be able to at least come up with some, hey, here's a really good starting point for the city, and here's what maybe needs to happen next by the final, by the final decision. Does that answer your question?
So I guess, I, I guess, I guess there's a gray area that's, yes.
There is, I mean.
It's not a yes or a no, it's just it's a gray area.
Right. And again, I don't want to speak for the entire committee, but I, I would still like to know more if, if a softball field, we need a softball field, we need an additional softball field. I think that's been made very clear that there is not enough, there is not enough softball fields for the teams here, and there's not enough soccer fields for the teams that are usable throughout the year. Now, I think where, where we're going to have our biggest challenge is, is this the best, the best space for it? And whether or not we can discover that in the next two meetings, I'm not sure.
So, yeah, so, so you would, you would be able to configure things like, if you had to move the road, if there was a road, can you, can you factor those kind of, kind of variables in and still come up with a plan, or do you need additional information?
So I think that, so learning what we've learned about the road, if, if the road goes in and we protect the incense cedars, then that puts the road in the middle of the park, which means that we have a big grassy field with a road in it, and then maybe a trail. That's, that's the best I can, that's the best I can visualize with what, the newest information. Now, if we had more time where, and we did have an arborist come out and look at and say this would be exactly where a road would go, and then we could say this could go in this space, that would be fine. The way I'm beginning to look at this, or the way, actually, not the way I'm beginning to look at this, the way that I, what I took from the last progress report was come to City Council with the top things that we, we would like to see go in there, and then, and then City Council will see if it's feasible, and using city engineers, arbrists to make those decisions, decisions.
Thank you, Kara, and again to all of the committee, thank you much.
Thank you.
Chair?
Sir? Kara, I would only echo with Counselor Hogan in saying, the committee has been fantastic. I appreciate everyone's time and effort and the outreach and engagement that you've done thus far in trying to get a better understanding of what the community needs and desires are, is very supportive and helpful in our decision-making process. So thank you there. I would be curious, Kara, if, does the Parks Committee have access to an inventory of our current park amenities to use as a guide for the recommendations of the Grabhorn space?
So the Parks and Rec does, absolutely. And then I believe we have, so we have available in the library, we have access to the master plan, what do we have access to in the library?
Because the reason I ask is, I, I do think that there's been a lot of asks thus far or recommendations of, I would love to see, and which we all have our opinions.
Right.
And I think that it's a best practice that we don't continue to build out just based on individual needs, but also assessing what our true needs are.
Right.
So that it can be more inclusive, it opens up opportunities for recreation and park use to a wider variety of our community citizens. So I just think, please use that as a, a supporting document in your decision that you would recommend for those amenities when you provide that final plan to council, so that we don't have too many reoccurring themes in our parks.
Correct.
So it creates diversity.
Yes.
I would be curious to know, and granted, I know that the information regarding the root boundary is very fresh.
Yeah.
My question would be if that roadway were to be incorporated at that potential area, that then now goes into the flood plain?
Correct.
Based on the site plans, site development plans?
That's what I would understand, but that's without looking at anything right now.
Right, just off the top of our head.
Correct.
I would just highlight that hopefully the city engineer or city staff can support in better understanding what would be possible based on those dimensions. Lastly, I would like to remind the committee that as the city seeks to incorporate this land as part of a grant, what amenities that we are proposing in the plan will also help us in potentially receiving those grant dollars. And so when I think of recreational field use for our, for our youth specifically, because those are the large user groups, that I, I do wonder, I do recommend proposing a plan that will help support our grant funding opportunities. From my understanding, through the state of Oregon, you know, a sport like soccer, which is a wide variety of different users, also has a really high BMI reduction rate associated to the activity, all of those things should be taken into consideration when proposing the plan, because that will also help with us in developing the grant proposal. And so I hope that those types of insights can be adopted into that final plan so that it can help with a more seamless approach to our funding mechanisms. With that, I do want to just say again, thank you to all of you for your support and to city staff in supporting the Grabhorn Ad Hoc Committee, so.
Oh, yes, they have been amazing. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kara, to you personally, I've watched the meetings back, and you run an efficient meeting, and it's amazing the amount of knowledge you guys have acquired over a short period of time, or the quick task that comes back a couple of weeks later with information is really impressive. This, this energy and time that you and your committee, the committee are putting in is, is not, you know, we're not, hopefully you don't feel taken advantage, because we, we greatly appreciate this work and we appreciate all the insights that you're giving us. And I think that some people, you know, something might be said at this meeting or your meeting, and then it runs like, oh my gosh, the city's gonna cut down a whole bunch of trees, like nobody ever said that, right? That's not anybody's intention. And so I think that throughout this process, us just listening to each other, having a conversation, doing the research, coming back, nobody has the answers, we don't know what we're gonna do, we don't know if the road going here means one thing or another, or not having a road, or having a soccer field, or a softball field, what the implications are gonna be to different people in the community, and it's a big ask, so thank you for your community. And it's a big ask. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Definitely, you know, we appreciate everything you've done. And also, everybody else that's kind of stepped up, made comments, you know, we don't actually, don't often get a ton of comments. So it's actually kind of nice to hear from the community.
They're controversial.
They are very controversial. You know, not just from them, but people that came out to the surveys and people that are actually speaking up and, and saying what they want in our community. You know, we, we, we're really trying to do this as a collaborative and really trying to figure out what the community need is. Obviously, you know, those that speak usually, you know, that's who gets heard. Often though, we also want to look and hear those that aren't speaking and trying to find other ways to, to really find what the best need of the community is. So I really appreciate all your guys' work. You guys have done a phenomenal job. So.
Thank you.
Kara, thank you for your work. And, you know, the nice thing about sometimes when rumors fly off is we actually learn things. I mean, think about it, had somebody not mentioned the,
Cutting all the trees down?
Cutting down the trees, or that property developing, we wouldn't have learned about these trees and their root structures and how that's going to impact any design we may have to do on the park. So this is actually a good, healthy process that we're getting this feedback so that we can get that information. Because sometimes you're doing something and you don't hear it. If somebody doesn't step up and say something, we're not going to know. So it's actually, I feel like this whole process has been very good in that we were getting feedback from multiple sources on issues that we didn't even think about when it was coming up. So I, and you know, I hear move the road 40 feet, that just, that doesn't fly. Because then we're just using the Grabhorn property for a road. And that's not why we got the Grabhorn property. And that's not the agreement we made with the Grabhorns when we bought the property. It was for a park. So your task is humongous. You're going to make recommendations to us. Hopefully we'll put something together that works for the majority of the community and is a great asset for the community going future, going into the future. You know, your next task, of course, is updating the parks master plan.
Right. Yeah, they're ready.
And, you know, really looking, for me, really looking at, how do we create a community where there's parks that are within a 10-minute walk of everybody in the community? There's great resources on that. But to me, that's, should be our goal, and having these multiple parks. But thank you for your work. And, you know, thank you for everyone that keeps bringing information back, because it opens the eyes and it's, it's actually making the committee do better work. So everyone should be very proud of that type of process.
It is. It's a very thought provoking. Can I ask one more question of the council?
Yes.
Off of Joe's, or Joel's comment, if we, as a committee, decide that we would like to take more time for this process, what is everybody's thoughts on that? If we did want to wait until one of the next years to make that happen?
Just take the request to the, well, A, I think you'd want to make sure that the committee is willing to continue the work.
Okay, yes.
B, just let the city know, let the council know.
Okay.
So if it's going to take more time, let's do it right, I guess.
Go ahead.
I would ask then, Council, City Manager Rains, when is the grant window for potential proposals to the state needed to be provided?
So typically, that grant cycle opens in January or somewhere in that neighborhood, and they're due in April. And then you typically find out about funding in summer, sign agreements the following fall. So, you know, in order to meet the next grant cycle, you'd be looking at, you know, probably really needing to be fully wrapped up and have everything in place by January. So when that actually opens, you're prepared to start actually writing what you need to be writing.
And, and for that process, what needs to be, do we have to have engineering done, site plans? Do we just have to have?
So typically speaking, as much engineering as you can have done as possible is best. I'd say at minimum, you probably want about a 10% design to be able to demonstrate what it is you want to do with the property. But like I said, the more you can do, the better, because you can only use a certain percentage of the grant dollars on engineering. So you have to keep that in mind. Then obviously, you know, the road is separate, because you can't use the park dollars for any kind of road if, if that went in. So there's just some things to consider. But I'd say at minimum, you'd want a 10% design. So you'd, you'd want to be set on what you want where.
And would be higher, higher out for the engineering and the design?
Correct, yes.
And so when would we want to give that to, some sort of a?
Well, I mean, if, if the committee were to wrap up, say, as, just as scheduled, and you're looking at, you know, September, we'd probably want to turn around and get moving on that fairly quickly once council made a decision about what you all wanted to see there.
So October, November?
Sure. So it, it would be a quick, it would be a tight turnaround. You know, you'd be looking at wanting to get approval from all of you, and, you know, putting together some kind of design, updating the master plan potentially, that kind of thing. So it's still a tight timeline. It's not that it's not doable, but, you know, if, if, if the committee wants more time, you're just, you're just looking at pushing out the grant cycle by a year.
Because that's what I ask, is I don't want to rush through this and that we try to fulfill the grant, and we, we don't have all of our ducks in a line. And so that's why I want to be mindful of the timeframe that we have to access that grant, based on our purchase date, is my understanding, right? We have a five-year?
So they extended it. We have a little bit more time to work with on that. So I would say, yes, if it, if it fell back by a year, you're not really looking at losing all that much in terms of being able to use the sale price as match. I would say that the way, you know, I know that council had been concerned about preserving the opportunity to go for the grant this coming year, which is why the timeline established in the bylaws is what it is. I would say if we slide off that timeline even a little, realistically, probably looking at pushing that back a full year. But I think anything worth doing is worth doing, right? So if that's, you know, if that, if you'd feel more comfortable with that, then, you know, we can still use the purchase price as match, have a little bit more leeway there. So I think being thorough and getting the right product is what's really important here. So.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up with Brandon's question. So if, if, if the committee really decides that, no, we want to do this right, we want more time, now let's not push it. Let's get it complete. Could we still do some rudimentary things like make a trail along the creek? Just, you know, wouldn't be a big toss, he might move at some point. So is there anything that would preclude that, those kinds of elements from happening if we push this out a year?
Are you talking about if, for the grant itself?
No, not for the grant. But, you know, so I think in, in our budget, we have $150,000 earmarked for, for the park this coming biennium.
I think, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe a lot of that money, we had specifically, we had specifically earmarked to make sure we could finish the engineering for whatever plan was put together.
Right, right. But I'd say if, if this is pushed out.
Sure.
So we take some of that money and, and put a rudimentary trail in, and then we'll use that as a kind of a foundation going forward through the, to a fruition of a, of a more robust and complete plan that goes for a grant process.
We'd have to check the zoning. We'd have to check the zoning and see what, what we can do by right within it, within that property prior to it, quote unquote, becoming a park. So that's, Lori's not here, so that's the one cautionary note that I'd throw out there. I know that when we brought it in, it wasn't, it wasn't zoned how it will eventually need to be zoned. And so I'd want to take a look at that, because that might impact what we can do. Or rather, just have us go through a separate process before we can get there. That probably wouldn't take a huge amount of time, given that the Grabhorns themselves put various covenants on the property, limiting large portions of the property, not the area immediately surrounding the existing house. We have a little bit more flexibility there for the rest of property. They didn't have those covenants and restrictions on it.
Actually, I, you know, I haven't seen the covenants. Can you, can we share, share the covenants with council?
Absolutely. So as part of the, you might recall that, that it was offered to the city at a pretty attractive price, considering the number of acres. And, and so I negotiated that with their attorney and, and kind of broker. And what was agreed to is that the land where the house is and kind of the, what would be, I guess, the backyard for that, where the carport was, et cetera, that can basically be used for any public purpose. So if we were to want to put, I'm just going to throw out things that probably will never happen, and I'm going to put that big caveat there, so people don't know this is about to happen. But if we wanted to move like our building or development or permitting offices to that space, there's enough flexibility in that covenant to do that. But for the rest of the parcel, the Grabhorns had felt strongly that that needed to be used for a park-like public purpose. So there's a little bit of flexibility, but not that much. So, you know, when we, when we agreed to, and that's something that, that Michael and I negotiated, and I think everyone intended that this would be a park and park-like amenities there. So that's in there. But as far as what we can do currently under the current zoning, I would need to take a look. Because I think it was intended that the process would all move forward at once, with rezoning and planning and getting state grants. And it, that process hasn't.
So that advice might be useful for the ad hoc committee as well, at this juncture. So if you can provide that, that would be.
Yeah. And practically speaking, as I think about the state grants and, and ones that I've been a part of, you know, one of the questions is going to be, and I had always pointed out to the, the council that the discussion regarding a road in a park are really two separate discussions. But what I would say, if, if there's not going to be a road at this time, or, or that's kind of the council, that the direction, the direction the council is going in, there would likely still need to be some sort of driveway or other way for people to access the park. Because if we're looking at the criteria that the state uses in order to make these determinations, they're not trying to fund, you know, neighborhood parks or pocket parks. They're really, they really prioritize funding parks that are open to a wider segment of the population versus immediate neighbors. So I think part of what they would look at would be, if, do other people in the city have the ability to get there and utilize that park? And how would they do so? So setting aside the question of road, which has probably been the most controversial until this week, and uses became pretty controversial, I think that that's something else that we would need to look at, would be, you know, driveway or other access onto the parcel. And then, given the new information we have regarding roots, that, that could impact whether it's, it doesn't matter whether it's a driveway or a road, you mean, you're putting in a concrete structure that cars are on. So.
But in any case, if any advice like that you can provide the committee, I think would be helpful.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, I think it's, if we're, if the priority is being competitive for a state grant, I completely agree with Alex, the more cooked the proposal is, so that people can see it and understand it, to understand not just what we're trying to do, but who might be able to utilize it. And I think that there were some comments made regarding equity and inclusion, and how facilities, I didn't know the difference between a softball field. I mean, I was ignorant of the fact that Little League fields have a mound and that softball fields don't. And so, you know, if we're talking about equity and inclusion, then that, that's a strong point, I think, is that there's currently one or two fields that might make the committee go in one direction versus the other. I think that question of field turf, or whatever turf it is, non-grass turf, given the lack of those facilities in the city, that's another question of equity and inclusion, because you could have a year-round versus. So I think all of those sort of elements, that's not to suggest that one outcome is the right outcome or not, but the more of that's fully cooked and that we can say, you know, cost of field turf will be X, and we would want to use field turf because it would allow year-round use, or this would be a softball, whether it's a softball field or a soccer field, or whatever it is, this is why there's that community need for it. Those are things that will help the grant application.
Thank you.
I, I feel like we were made aware of all of those points that the Grabhorns had told us in the midst of the sale. I mean, we reviewed those documents. We agree that this will be used as a park space. If you want some sort of a building or an office, it can only go where the current home is. I think that we were all made aware of that and viewed those documents upon decision. So thank you for the.
Yeah, I mean, we did, I think we did an example, but something that our committee might not have been aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
All right, next item, purchase of wide-area mower, Mr. Sukow.
So tonight, Public Works is seeking council's approval for the purchase of a new mower. We researched these mowers last year, demoed each one of them to see how they operate, to see what they would do for us. We have found these mowers to be very valuable. Last year, we did purchase a used 2014 mower that is the same basic mower as what we're proposing for purchase now. You find them extremely efficient and valuable for us, because one person can now do the work of two or more, which is definitely beneficial for Public Works, since we're shorthanded. And with the addition of new facilities, such as the Grabhorn Field, Chapman Landing, all of the Dyke and things, there's just lots to mow. With that said, we researched the three mowers, the Jacobson, the John Deere, and the Toro. The John Deere is the cheapest, it's $60,092.20. That model's available as soon as it would come from the factory. So hopefully we'll have it in a couple of months. And this is the same model, like I said, as what we currently use, used version. And we have had no issues with it, other than a minor dirt in the tank and things because of the previous owner. Other than that, it's been effective for us. So with that, we're requesting that you authorize interim city manager reins to make this purchase for Public Works.
Mayor?
Councilor Pauling?
How old is our current one? We have?
2014. We bought it last year. It was a state of Oregon trade-in. We just happened to stumble on the right time to get our hands on it. It was a low-hour machine.
The, like, average lifespan of those machines?
You could probably get about 15,000 hours out of one, if that's animal. Ten years, 10 to 20 years. I've been actually inventory, inventorying our mowers, and we have mowers a day back to 1990 currently in operation.
Sweet.
Can't pass the DEQ test.
The thing, you don't have to register them for the road.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I move council authorized interim city manager reins to purchase the John Deere 1600 mower from Pepe Machine in the amount of $60,092.20. We got to do each.
Hearing motion by Counselor, I'll say it again, Wasowski. I'm going to say Lebowski.
Go ahead, yeah. Dude.
Do I have a second? Hearing a second by Counselor Haugen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, outside hookup action application, Mr. Neglisbaugh.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm here to present an application for a water hookup for a gentleman that lives up in Dutch Canyon, lives on the treated water line along Dutch Canyon Road, and therefore, under SCAPU's municipal code 15.04, it's allowed to request. So we've had, he's filled out this application. I don't think, he's, he's not here tonight. I've had several conversations with him. He had a complete application, so we did some due diligence on it. Public Works went up and tested the pressure, and we looked at the arrangement that's there. There was an anticipation for future hookup when the treated water line was, was constructed a number of years ago. And so there was already stub to the property and a mirror box that was set three years ago. That was all in place. There's photographs of it in your packet. He provided a sketch of the arrangement. This shows approximate location of his house and some contour information, which helps me determine what pressure he'll have at the elevation of his house. From that, I'd just do some simple math and determine, you know, what pressure he'll have, and then what equipment. and then what equipment he would request so that we don't have any backwater issues. That's on page 74 of your packet. Um, he's also agreed to all of the, as a part of the application, they agree to all of the terms that are from our code. There's the key, the key points are listed in the application. I make them read and sign that, that they understand all of it. They also have an obligation to pay system development charges, a hookup fee, and then they pay an outside, a, a little bit different, uh, service fee. I believe it's a little bit higher for outside water users, the monthly. That said, um, I, uh, we don't have a staff report, but it requests the council, uh, take a vote. And upon a two-thirds approval, um, the city manager is authorized to agree to this. And then can take steps to get him hooked up. Any questions?
Um, yes, Chris, just out of curiosity, um, I can't remember from some of the um, numbers that we've been presented for costs, but out of curiosity, what would this cost? This.
Including the system development charges?
Meter, all of it?
I don't have a complete number, but it was, it's in excess of $10,000.
Okay, that, thank you. Someone had, had asked me, what would it cost, you know, about by the time I do all this to hook up? I thought it was about.
With, with our new fee, it's, it's, it easily exceeds over 10,000. The system development charge for a residential meter is 8,900 and some change.
I thought, I, I told him like 10 to 12.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, that's a good guess.
Okay.
And he's already got a lot of the piping already installed from the street up to his house. He's just got a short segment to do, so a lot of his costs are kind of baked into, into his thought process. So it's really kind of paying the city costs and a plumber to kind of, kind of make the short connection at his house, so.
Counselor Haugen. Chris, um, this is not for community and commercial use, right?
No, 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 these are all, these are all residential properties. They're all on like five acres, cause that's what the county zoning is.
So, so no concern about inordinate amount of water usage?
No, no, we, no, I haven't found that to be the case at all. Most of these are as a result of declining well production.
These also the, are these part of the, these aren't the properties along the lawsuit properties?
They are, they're not the direct lawsuit properties, cause there's only a handful of those. But when that happened, when we installed the raw water line, or the, I'm sorry.
Waterline, we opened it up to anyone along that line.
Yeah, then we said anyone out, on that, that's directly abutting, that's, that line be eligible to connect. And it, and it sort of makes sense from the standpoint of, it was a really expensive line to build for, I think, eight of the original, um, you know.
Was the only way, it was the only way we were going to get the money to build more plant.
Right, and, right, and so this, this sort of gives you a little more revenue against all that cost.
Yeah, for sure.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Point of clarification, Chris. So this is like, or, or the second, maybe third application that I've seen in the last three years in regards to hooking up to the city's infrastructure here. I know that there are some large lots up on Dutch Canyon. And on lot 102 here, I think it's like 5.4 acres. Is, do we ever take into consideration the potential of subdividing those larger lots prior to knowing that if you're on the water line at this particular address, now it's four additional addresses? How would we address that?
Yeah, that's actually addressed in the code. Um, it, it, I don't have the, the code site here, but it, it says that the number of, of connections are, um, grandfathered into the land use in place during the time that it was allowed, which was in 2003. So they're essentially, if the county decides to densify, you know, and allow more, you know, partitions, what have you, then, then they're still kind of locked into that single meter connection.
Thank you.
Till such time that they may, you know, we may decide to annex them in and then they're city property. And of course, then it's different.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, motion? Mayor.
Counselor Haugen.
I move we approve the, uh, application for a city water hookup. Hearing a motion by Counselor Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Saying my counsel polling, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, 100 year celebration event, Mr. Keith Miller.
Okay, so, uh, Mayor, Council, I'm at the cat out of the bag, we're having a 100 year event.
What?
I know.
Weird.
So, in, in front of you, we have a formal request. First of all, I want to thank, uh, Pete has done a ton of work on this, um, a lot. He's always going on this and, and bringing up a lot of good things. He has a lot of events that are happening in this, that are, it's going to be fun. It's a lot over two days, but, uh, when you look at it, it, it's going to be a tremendous event for the city. The second I want to, Isaac, Isaac is behind the scenes. Um, and he does a lot of work, a ton of work. And I want to make sure everybody recognizes that, that, um, he is beating his head against the wall many nights, I think. So, but he's doing a great job.
Looking about 100 now, yeah.
He didn't have a beard when he.
Feels like he's been around since.
He's corralling cats sometime, right? So, but Isaac's doing a great job too, and everybody else, um, on the committee. So, in, in front of you is the restricted parking above, uh, Veterans Park. Obviously, the same thing we've done with Summer Fest, the Pow Wow in previous years. Prior to that, with that, we give parking permits, um, basically issued to the homeowners and they can hand them out. That way, they're not overrun with people that are going to the event to park in the area above there and that. So, uh, we have a lot of those to hand out, uh, prior to the event. And then the street closures, obviously, um, that come with, with, with the event being a veterans and heritage. We have, we have those street closures that come with that. And then, um, the parade route will have closures, um, to go down First Street, down Maple, down Fourth, back up EM Watts. And that, so, um, that'll last about an hour and that. So that, that won't have a large impact, but it'll still have an impact in that. And then the, the extended times. So our code is only to 10, um, we're going to extend to midnight at both parks because they're going to do movies over here at Heritage. And then they're going to have the live music over at Veterans to go till midnight. Now, with that, we do have a sound meter. We measure every hour, um, of these events. We don't let them go over 60, 62. When we start giving above that, um, we'll tell them to turn it down a little bit. And that, because they are a residential area, it's still going to affect, but we try to keep it to a minimum. We do record that. At the end of this event, um, we actually have a stat sheet that will provide council with everything we did as a, a public safety in regards to the times of readings, any type of warnings given, citations, anything like that. So you can have an overview of, um, what we are tasked with and that, and hours, um, put into this. And with that said, um, unless Isaac has anything to add, we just ask for council to approve this, um, and that.
I have a question unrelated to, um, the permitting. Um, do we have it in the budget for amount of overtime for officers? Or I would just hope it's like all hands on deck and
Is.
That we can have everybody as.
We're all, everybody's.
Fully staffed, no, no vacations.
Vacations. Except for me, but.
Oh, yeah, totally, yeah.
No, it's, it's no vacations and, and they know that and their, their, their understanding of it because it is a, an event in the city and.
I just think providing public safety at such large gatherings is so important so that if, make sure that that is a priority and it's in the budget that.
It is, we're fine.
Great, thank you.
Do we have notification signs that are going to be put up earlier in time showing that road closures? And, I mean, I know that this is a huge event that we're putting on as a city, but some people still don't see things or hear things or read things. So, uh, just kind of preventative measures to let people know that we are closing certain routes. There, kind of what the plan is for that.
Well, yes, a, a, and that, the, the week of the event, there'll be a lot of signage. We have the two ODOT signs that'll go out each end of town and that. And then we have the different signings that go out throughout the city. And that, as prior to that, no. With it, getting that out there, uh, we'll put it on our app, we'll put it on our Facebook, our website and that. Just to blast that out, um, probably the both days, we'll hit the app both days of the event just to let them know the events going on and also the closures.
Is it too late to maybe get it in the August newsletter?
Yeah, there's a ton in there.
So this packet is exactly what was sent to my house. Is that because I live there or was everybody, is it because I'm in the affected neighborhood or?
Isaac can touch on that.
So we sent a notice to around a third of the residents of the city because they're in a certain proximity. It wasn't exact, but we, I did look within a couple of blocks, um, where there was parade route or a closure. And then at Veterans, I also looked at kind of the music bubble, as it were, and where I thought it might go. So 720 separate, um, letters were sent, so a fair portion of the city owner.
And I have one more, thank you, Susan. I, I did get an email in regards to, uh, a person that was on Northeast Prairie Street that wanted restricted parking over there because they come and go to work during those times of the event. And they're afraid that they're not going to be able to get in and out because people park along there. So that has never been one of our roads, um, in any of the events that we have restricted parking on, just to add that. Thank you, Susan.
Questions, motion? Mr. Mayor. Counselor Haugen. I move we approve the SCAPU's 100 year event as presented. Hearing motion by Counselor Haugen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselors Lasowski, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Full cost public outreach campaign, survey analysis. Mr. Hugh Whitehouse and Isaac Putman.
I'm going to go ahead and let Isaac take this one. He has done an immense amount of research and work on this project. And so I will, I'll chime in if you absolutely need me, but Isaac's the star here.
Uh, Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm here tonight, I will try to be brief. Um, I'd like to speak in two areas, uh, first, survey validity and second, results. Um, regarding survey validity, I would note that, uh, 578 valid survey responses were received. So that means people who live within a taxing district that would be affected, that is a very large turnout. So it actually does reach to a representative sample size for the city. That's the most responses that I know of that we've ever had in terms of, um, percentages of population. So there's that to note. Second off, in terms of that, if you look, there's a slide that shows the breakdown of, um, who responded and you'll see that that tracks with census data, which again backs up the validity of the responses from the survey. Uh, kind of ancillary to that, I will briefly mention that some of the participants in the Grabhorn Ad Hoc Committee had some concerns about the survey as written. So we did go through an iterative process with the staff and council to determine those numbers. And information is in the packet as well. Um, I'm going to not cover that unless, uh, there's a question. So, um, essentially the data, um, coming from this is pretty clear and decisive. Uh, 68.8% of respondents indicated they would not support any kind of additional tax increases for an outdoor pool. And 71.5% indicated they would not get supportive of additional taxes for an indoor pool. At the dollar amount that we were stating, which we feel is probably a very good estimation. That's pretty much all I have. Those are the only questions we asked of, uh, this, this people who responded. So I will open it up to.
It falls right in line with the surveys from 2002, 2003 that were done, telephone surveys, where it was, those surveys are really interesting because there was no middle ground. There was, when, when you do a phone survey, and I think Bruce is, uh, attests to this, you asked the question. Well, when they asked the question and if they're not sure, and then they say, well, I lean this way, and then they get counted into that side, there was no soft support for or against the pool 20 years ago. For the tax base to pay for the pool. Then it got shot down 75, 25. That was the big one. The smallest one was 55, 45, but there was no movement. We see no movement in pool, there's no soft support or opposition. There's, you don't move those people, you don't move those hard people. And so it was like, I remember then saying, well, it's not going to pass, but Parks District wants to do it, go ahead. And so, I mean, this doesn't surprise me.
Uh, the, uh, on the qualitative data does back that up as well. Look at the kinds of responses, uh, what people were saying in the comments, um, and the coding data is in there. There was hard sport and there's nothing. Nothing in the middle. Yeah.
You tend to see a 10-point decline too when people actually, between the polling and vote. But I generally see that people that actually vote, you, that's why you want to be at least 10 points up your polling. So that if these were actually put to a vote, I think that the numbers would look a more, a lot more like an indoor facility would be like 81% against than an outdoor facility closer to set between 70 and 75.
Any people that do, that I've had conversations with in the past that do those, the ballot measure campaigns, they won't even run a campaign title unless it's polling 75 to 80%. Because they know that that number is going to chip away by the time it gets to election day.
Right, I mean, it's 60%, you basically have no margin for error whatsoever. And even, you know, even with the best voter education, it's, you know, neutral and accurate voter education that they perceive as being honest, you're still going to lose 10%. I don't know what that is, but that's just the minimum you can expect to lose, sort of thing.
So are we at the point where we have to some sort of an agreement that this is something that remains tabled or funds are used for a different type of water experience such as a splash pad and that the direction of the ad hoc committee is to no longer use a pool in the plan? Or we have data in front of us, what are we, now what's the action?
I think that the direction to the committee should be that the data doesn't support city building a pool with tax dollars because those citizens weren't willing to support paying taxes, additional taxes for a pool.
Only with the broader tax base would we have a chance.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. With that comment though, I believe that the Grabhorn Ad Hoc Committee was tasked with creating both a
Yeah.
proposal with and without. Is it, is it our desire that they just move forward with a plan to provide to council that does not include a swimming pool?
Two different plans that don't, you know, now they can be more creative.
Yeah, they can be more creative with one, I think, is what we probably should say. And these numbers are just, that number's not going to change. It didn't change 18 years ago, 17 years ago, it's not going to change today. You know, there's just, and the numbers 18 years ago was the greater community. So it was Parks District being polled, not just the city, so.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I, I definitely would suggest that we don't lead them down a path that we already know what the answer is going to be. Um, I'd rather have them focus their time on something that is, you know, positive and, and moving in the right direction. So I would.
I, and
Well said.
You know, we're, we're asking these people to do an awful lot.
I'm crunched.
Short period of time.
Yeah.
Why add on to something that's totally unnecessary? And, you know, you could probably reduce that pool cost. Uh, there's arguments whether or not it was a realistic cost or not.
Sure.
But he could reduce it in half, he'd end up with the same result. People aren't going to pay for it. That's, that's just the reality. So I, I would say take that off the table. Oh, it's, they could have another water with a splash pad or what? Splash pad, fine, but take the pool off the table.
We can probably get a ruling from the AG's charitable division about whether we could use those funds for the, for a splash pad or other amenity. I mean, the, the good news is they've been in touch with us fairly recently regarding something totally unrelated, so.
We've got current contact.
I can, I can certainly pick up the.
When does that committee meet again?
That would be next, uh, Thursday.
Are we able to relay that information to them before?
We'll do that, if that's your decision, I will do that tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
Yeah. I mean, do we want to do a vote?
Yeah. I think, I mean, do we want to do a vote just so it's? Direct to my decision. Just motion to direct, uh, the Grabhorn Parks Committee to only present or pursue a plan without the pool.
So move.
Hearing a motion by Counselor McHugh. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Polling, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have direction. Thank you.
Yeah, Grabhorn Park Committee will appreciate that.
All right, next item, announcements. Wow. Farmers markets every Saturday, ad hoc committee meetings every Thursday. Our next council meeting will be August 2nd. With a six o'clock work session, 7:00 PM. Council meeting, and then August 16th with the work session at six o'clock, council meeting at seven o'clock. 100 year event is the 13th and 14th. It's like we don't have a planning commission meeting until August. Well. City Manager Rains, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council. Um, just wanted to let you all know that the peace candle easement has been executed. We are ha, or we have a sign up sheet for the city booth for the centennial event. I know that Joel and Pete were planning to be at the booth, but we were basically just trying to have a few people on task. Um, you know, for a couple hour increments from 10 to five. So if any of you are interested in participating in that, we'll have some staff members too. But we thought maybe having some councils at that booth would be good as well. Just let me know if that's something you're interested in. Um, we've have the joint, uh, work session with county commissioners on August 2nd. Um, one of the things we do want to talk about is an update with the Drainage District on the work they've been doing with their interior drainage analysis. But I don't think that's going to take up the whole meeting. So if there are other items you want to cover, please let me know in advance. And then finally, the final hearing on the Chapman Landing Rezone is moving forward. I believe that's August 11th. Yeah. And so, um, that'll. Yes, that'll get wrapped up. And completed then.
Be a discussion about the EJ Smith Road Bridge.
With the commissioners?
A bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Old highlight.
Door bridge.
I think it's important on that, uh, bridges that I believe if I remember modern sewer, like we already have connections at that bridge point. Or under the creek in some areas.
There's infrastructure in the area.
Yeah.
Let's close for public record exactly where and what, but if you do need that information, we can find a legal manner to provide that to you. I would be more than happy to.
Well, cause I, I was around when JP Westbridge was replaced and I remember going through that whole process. And we actually had pipes that were, had to be torn out because of the bridge replacement. And, well, we got to pay for the new stuff. One of the ways we saved money was attaching one of the lines to the bridge.
Can just say that proposed or recommended or whatever suggestions for the J Smith Bridge will not solve our.
In terms of?
For the point for structure.
Thank you.
That was one of the points I was going to ask.
I don't know if that's an executive session, but I would be happy to explain it to you if it's inappropriate.
I, yeah, I mean, it's all, it's in the sewer and water master plan. Chief, you have anything? Did you, was that everything? Chief?
I'm good.
Uh, no, not once you have questions for me.
No. Isaac, you got anything? Yul, I want to leave you out.
My name changed.
Isaac.
So, so that's the, the weird name. It wasn't a, it wasn't a joke. So.
Really did it.
Yeah. Good. That's my news item.
Sure what?
That's my news item.
Oh, I found my member's only mask. So just in time to not have to use it.
We'll speak to soon.
You merge them?
Mr. Sukow, you got anything?
Put the names together when they got married.
Yeah, okay. But it's not hyphenated, which is.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I had to fill it.
Congratulations.
Thank Council for the support on the mower and, and our items to keep things moving. The tools definitely make our job are easier for our crews and far more efficient. So.
Counselor McHugh?
Uh, yeah. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Bruce for their sponsorship, West Coast Shoes. They're, they're one of our sponsors for the, uh, for the event and we appreciate their support. Also, I would like to second what, uh, Norm has already said that Isaac is doing a fantastic job for, you know, he really does keep us organized. And we really did need that. And, uh, so it's not an easy job, believe me, but, uh, we appreciate his work. Also Joel, uh, does a lot of things and he's got this really cool, your tree thing that he's been working on. And, uh, it's going to be, he fills in with a lot of things that are really helpful to me and the other members of the committee. Uh, also, we have a little bit of a need for the event. If anybody wants to step up and help out with doing some MC work at the, uh,
Like right up your alley.
We've, we've got, uh,
Here, we already got me.
We've got a couple, you know, they're, they're not all day shifts. They're like a couple hour shifts and, uh, and, and there's dead time, but you know, just someone available if we have to have an announcement made, uh, and in between acts like at Heritage or Veterans. And so, uh, we'll have an MC at both locations. Okay. Thanks, Brandon.
I think Bruce would be a great MC.
Yes, he would. I just saw what the hour. Plan this thing.
You sponsored it.
Yeah, right. We're nothing without you.
Um, Betsy does, does it at the county fair. I mean, she sits in the booth, the booth at the county fair and announces if you want to ask her. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll, that's a good, good suggestion. She's already involved with some other things and, uh, but, uh, yeah, that's a very good suggestion. And last thing is Farmers Market. I've been there a couple of times in the last few weeks and they, it's a really, really nice event. It was, it's, it's put together well and, uh, Bill Blank does a terrific job with it. And, uh, you know, it's just fun. And so if you, if you haven't been there and you get a chance to do it, good thing to do and, and kudos to Bill for all his work on that. And Josette too. Josette helps him a lot as well. So.
Hold on. Uh, uh, let's see. First, Pete, uh, you've done a phenomenal job with this 100 year celebration. I just want to say, uh, I really appreciate that. And I'm glad that everybody else will soon as they see all the results of that. So job.
Thank you.
The staff, you know, we're halfway through the year. Um, you guys have done a phenomenal job, especially with all the pressures and everything going on and changes and the constant, uh, new stuff always coming. So, uh, I, I appreciate seeing you guys work hard and, and being a huge part of the success of the city. So I just want to say thank you. All I got?
President?
Um, yes, uh, I echo what, um, Counselor McHugh had said about the Farmers Markets. This is kind of little gem that's not always visited so much. And I think that's, um, a good thing to get out there for people. Also, um, huge appreciation to our, our public library. I mean, the summer reading program that they've done and, and, um, everything that, uh, um, they're doing for the kids on Saturdays during market day. So we're definitely in Heritage Park every Saturday because there's just so much great stuff that people are putting on for our community.
He's a big part of this, uh, Centennial too. He's doing some terrific.
Just amazing. Yes. Yes, big asset. So thank you for collaborating and, and working with them. Um, I wanted to echo some sentiments that, um, Senator Johnson made earlier about interim city manager reins. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, um, we could be in a much worse place if she were not here, um, being our leader. And, uh, you know, we have all these systems in place and we've got the, everything's just really well greased and, and moving. And, um, she has definitely shown in her own light, um, with, without being an assistant city manager, being our interim and our, our main go-to leader. Um, and I hear nothing but good things from people that work with her in our, um, county and, um, other jurisdictions across the state. So thank you so much for all that you've done and continue to do for us. And to those of you that follow under her leadership and lead your own teams, thank you as well.
Okay. Uh, just wanted to note that I think, I think Pete is going to survive the Centennial. And, uh, yeah, again, I, going Pete's comment, Isaac is just an absolute goldmine. Uh, he's organized. He's, he's right on top of stuff. Uh, he's innovative. He's creative. I mean, he's just like the cat's mail for, for this kind of project and all kinds of different. So thank you, Isaac.
Right. Counselor Lasowski?
I want to build on what everyone's kind of been talking about. First persons, I'd like to recognize, I've been attending the Grabhorn Ad, Ad hoc Committees every Thursday or every other Thursday. We're going to be moving to every Thursday. Um, Yul, thank you so much for coming out last Saturday to help facilitate with the engagement opportunity. I think that, uh, just having staff presence there, especially on a Saturday, always tough. But I'm so grateful that you were able to do that. Uh, so continuing to also support, uh, the Adahoc Committee and moving forward, right? Regardless of what the outcome is. Isaac, I would also like to build on your participation and support for the, uh, Adahoc Committee. It's been fantastic, your response to the questions, which you don't know what you're being dealt. And you handle yourself as a, as a true professional. And so I, I appreciate you representing the city on that. Under your celebration is going to be a very, very monumentous and exciting opportunity for our commit, uh, for our community. And, uh, Counselor McHugh, I cannot say that this event would not be where it is, uh, you know, what, less than a month out without your dedication and support and the people that you've surrounded yourself with to allow this to happen. I can't, as a citizen to a citizen, thank you. I really appreciate this and it's very exciting. So.
Mike is our, he's our real leader. Uh, he, he does a great job of, you know, keeping everybody.
Excited?
Oh, yeah. He, he keeps us moving forward. You know, he's got a joke here and there and, you know, it's, it's, it's all good.
Thank you, Pete, for your time and dedication to this. Lastly, Alex. What you've been able to do thus far through these very trying and difficult times for our community show also your leadership and dedication to the work that you perform. Um, yeah, it's great that you were able to support Senator Johnson and bringing $14 million to help out Dave. I know that him and his team will be extremely excited for that and also our community. But I think that it shows your dedication again and your commitment to the position and the title that you've taken on at this time. So I would like to just say thank you for that. Um, with that, I hope that everyone has a great, uh, rest of their July coming out, right?
What is left in July? Just want to thank Council for the work they do, begin with, but also staff and, you know, the Grabhorn Committee is just really doing human's work on a park that you always think something is going to be simple, but you know, once you start adding all kinds. I'll, I'll tell you, it was much simpler to be building your first park when you didn't have any, you know, when we were putting Veterans Park in because, well, everyone is excited just to have a park built. They didn't care what was in it. But it's kind of nice to be in the position now where we've got between Miller and the amenities here. And the other amenities that we've got that we're actually having to have a hard looks at these things and community's engaged and it's great. And it's been great guidance by staff. And then, uh, Alex, you know, even when I knew it was going to be super hot that weekend and I knew we were getting the $14 million. And I said, let's get a bunch of those Cool Zone machines to put around town. She wouldn't spend the money that way, which is probably smart. But I, I found out just right prior to that weekend, Betsy had given me a call and it's just sometimes you get to interview by doing the job. And, you know, like I said, there's no position, technically, there's no position of interim city manager in our charter. He's, her job is right now the city manager of the city of Scapoose. She's just on a short-term contract. That's what it is. And there's no, and I remember this because, well, I spent eight weeks as city manager. And the first thing I was told by the attorney was charter says you're city manager. You have every power and authority that the charter grants you because there is no interim position. So it's not in the charter, the short-term contract, right, Peter?
That's correct.
But, uh, I think, you know, I'm going to be hard pressed seeing, and I'm going to be honest, hard pressed, having seen the work that she's done and to sit in an interview and hear someone be more impressed than that. That's going to be a huge hurdle to lift. And this isn't like a three-month city manager thing. Yeah, she's pushing a year now. And, you know, we've seen the work. So, you know, there's, I'm looking forward to seeing what the hiring people have for us. But I mean, that's going to be a, that's going to be a heavy lift. For any candidate that's coming before the city because, I mean, if I was another community, I'm looking for someone. I'm looking for Alex. Actually, uh, I'm looking for those two as well. I mean, we've been, in a way, we've been blessed by a connection that our previous city manager had to the public administration at Portland State University, Go Vikings. That has gotten, I mean, started, Alex started as an intern, correct? Yul started as an intern, correct? Isaac currently an intern. Previous to that, we had the, the, the rare students. And I sit with other mayors. I tried to describe the difference between having U3 over the last five, six years and rare students the three previous years. And I tried to explain to them it's, a rare student is good if you give them jobs to do. But U3 are head and shoulders because a rare student usually just has a bachelor's degree. You all, ushers of public administration. And so you, this is your career area and we're getting to benefit off of that and help your career. And you guys have done an enormous amount of help for this community, the city. So it's, you guys should be proud. And actually the School of Public Administration at Portland State University, Go Vikings, should us, should also be very proud. So, thank you all.
I do have a question. Do we ever show up in case studies at the Portland State University?
Oh.
About that a lot.
I mean. Model city. I mean, I think we end up in stories during his classes, don't we? Okay, yeah. Sort of.
I, I recommend other mayors, uh, go find a master students of public administration for interns of a rare students. As I, every single day of the week, you're going to get a better quality, uh, intern than you are getting. And nothing against the rare program. I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, if you want something better. So anyways, thank you all for tonight. Good meeting. Uh, let's go ahead and adjourn and have a good night.